Hello again and welcome. Thank you for joining us today. I'm Bob Continetti, Senior Associate Vice Chancellor for Academic Affairs, and I'll be your moderator for this special session on lessons we've learned this fall about in-person instruction during the COVID-19 pandemic. Our format today is a little different than our usual town halls. Today, we're going to focus our discussion on fall instruction and share information on what's been learned to date. First, we're excited to have two faculty members here with us today who've been teaching on campus in person this fall to share their experiences during this unique time. After that, we will have members of the COVID Monitoring Team, the Educational Continuity Task Force, and Emergency Operations Center, and they're here to answer your questions. Some questions were submitted during registration. As always, please feel free to use the Q and A window to submit additional questions for our panelists. Before we get started, though, I'd like to mention the exciting pilot that our university is participating in for the state of California. The California COVID Notify smartphone app is a promising new way for our university to help rapidly control COVID-19 outbreaks. California COVID Notify is a voluntary anonymous exposure notification system that lets you know if you've come into contact with someone who has tested positive. We'll talk a little bit more about how it works later in the webinar, but we encourage you to learn more by using the QR code that is appearing on your screen right now as part of my backdrop. And yeah, I think it will be put up here. There's also a link that's been placed into the chat, so please take a look at that. Due to time constraints, we may not be able to get to all of your questions today, but we're going to log them as they come in and post the answers on the Return to Learn website. But first, I would like to welcome our host, Executive Vice Chancellor Elizabeth Simmons, for some opening remarks. Elizabeth?
Thanks very much, Bob. I'm excited to be part of this gathering today. We're here, as Bob said, to talk about the in-person teaching experience on campus. Just to give you a little context, in the fall so far, the faculty have been doing incredibly creative teaching, both in-person and remote. And they're doing this on a campus where we've been doing thousands of COVID tests every single day and where wastewater testing is coming soon as an additional backup. The positivity rate is incredibly low, a small fraction of a percent. And we have great systems in place to care for those who do become ill and to isolate those who might have been exposed. Walking around campus, I see our students wearing their masks, maintaining social distance, and still managing to have an enjoyable time on campus. There have not been issues with people wearing masks in the classroom. That is, people simply are wearing them. So looking ahead to winter, we're at 6% of our normal capacity of in-person classes, and we actually have the ability to triple that number in the winter quarter if people are interested in teaching in person. And of course, we're also adding outdoor teaching spaces as well. We'll also have more international students who've finally managed to get their visas will be joining us in the winter. That is, they were taking classes remotely in fall. They'll join us in person in the winter in San Diego, and they will each need to take at least one in-person class, so there will be even more student interest in in-person classes. So if you decide that you're potentially interested in teaching in person in winter, I would advise you, sign up so that you reserve a classroom, you get your time set, because as always, it's your choice, the teaching modality that you use. You can always change your mind and revert to remote teaching if you decide that that's better for you. So with that bit of context, I'm looking forward to hearing today from the faculty who have been in the classroom with our students this fall. Back to you, Bob.
Thank you very much, EVC Simmons. Now, I'd like to welcome Senate Chair Stephen Constable to say a few words.
Thank you, Bob. Senate leadership recognizes that faculty instructors are working extremely hard under difficult circumstances to adapt their classes to online, remote, and hybrid forms of instructions. While many of us learned a great deal from the experience of teaching remotely in spring quarter and summer, some of us are COVID-teaching for the first time in this fall, and for others, the situation is changing as we open up the campus to some in-person instruction. Senate is also working hard in order to represent the interests and concerns of faculty through the process of shared governance, and I hope that today's presentations and discussions will prove helpful. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Senate Chair Constable. So now, I'd like to welcome Professors Gabrielle Rabies and Lili Vandennanda, who have been teaching in person this fall, and to have a discussion with us about their experiences so far during the pandemic. Welcome, Professors Rabies and Vandennanda.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So first, I was wondering if you could tell us a little bit about yourselves, in particular, which department are you working in? How many years you've been here at UC San Diego? And the type of classes you typically teach?
Thank you.
Yeah, so my name is Lili Vandennanda, and I'm a teaching professor in the Department of Structural Engineering, and I've actually been at UCSD for quite a long time. I got my PhD here in the 90s and worked at the Supercomputer Center for a while. And so I do have a high teaching load, and I teach a lot of classes from different years, but I'm especially proud of my freshman-level classes. Actually, all of my classes involve hands-on learning, so I do a lot of laboratory courses or other types of projects where I get them into the Envision Maker Studio, and we're doing a lot of building and breaking and those kinds of things.
Sounds good. Gabrielle?
And I'm Gabrielle Rabies. I'm a professor of Electrical Engineering and Computer Engineering. I teach, I had here for 15 years, and I teach senior and graduate-level classes most of the time, sometimes junior-level classes too. And the classes range from 25 to 70 generally in these classes, and they are really on microwaves and cell phones and, you know, how we build our base stations and satellite systems and things like that.
Thank you, Gabrielle. So to understand better where we are today, I was wondering if you could take us back to your experiences during spring quarter? I know it's only a few months ago, but it seems like a lifetime. And so, Lili, I would first ask you, how did you adapt and teach your courses in the spring quarter?
Yeah, so it was really tough. Obviously, we didn't have a lot of time to prepare. I was also teaching an engineering graphics course, which requires access to software that is very intensive, so I had to work with campus to make sure that we could get the students to remotely connect to the software since they didn't have access to the computer labs. I also do a very fun hands-on term project where they're in the Maker Studio doing 3D printing and laser cutting and building a Rub Goldberg machine, and it's incredible, and I was not able to do that. So it took, you know, I had to kind of rethink and retool, and unfortunately, we tried to do some interactive, computer-based projects, but my overall experience was that students were having a hard time and they were not engaged at all. And it really, I have three high school students at home, and so I was seeing the pain from all angles, and so I really wanted to see what we could do to make the experience better for the students coming in, especially since I'm teaching a freshman-level course this fall.
So that trying quarter didn't really work out that well as far as the teaching experience?
No, I felt we were working really hard, but it was hard to really reach the students at that time, so.
And Gabrielle, I understand you didn't teach during the spring quarter, but how did what you experienced then through interactions with your colleagues shape your expectations for the fall?
You know, my colleagues, I would say, except for the labs, are very much like Lili, except for the labs, and of course, we were following the emails, it seems that the ECE department had things under control very quickly, maybe because a lot of the faculty already had given the lectures in PowerPoint and so on, and they were familiar with Zoom through meetings. I did not feel any big issues, except giving quizzes and, you know, monitoring quizzes and things like that, and final exams. And like Lili said, you know, how do you, on a turn of a dime, give complex engineering labs, you know, in the spring term without having the summer to prepare for it? So that was, so at least from my experience, Lili, it parallels Lili's experience.
Right. And then, so Gabrielle, staying with you, what made you decide to teach in person for the fall quarter? Because obviously, a lot of people have thought about this, and there's a wide range of opinions.
Well, you know, I really believed in the interaction with the students. You know, I want to see their eyes. Covering really complex stuff at the senior and graduate level, and I have always felt that looking in their eyes and seeing if they're understanding or not, and then taking the lecture wherever I want to take it, by repeating material, by giving more examples and so on, and not be in a rigid PowerPoint format, is the way to go. And until now, I have never, I refuse to give PowerPoint. You know, I always give them my notes, and I go onto the board, and we just give the lecture at the pace of the student understanding, and I felt that this feedback would be broken, and I won't have this instant feedback. And therefore, I really insisted, I'm actually very happy that there was this option, I really insisted to give it in person.
Thank you. Lili, what about you? When did you make the decision to teach in person this fall?
So very early on, pretty much right after spring quarter. And, you know, it was a combination of just, I already luckily had lab sizes that were 20 or less, so it wasn't like I had to make any special accommodations, except the curriculum had to be revamped. But, and mostly because I'm teaching a freshman-level class, and I was really feeling bad for those kids who missed their senior year in high school, and then they're starting their freshman year. And, you know, in engineering, it's all about cohort building and team building and really meeting people and working together over the four years or however many years they're here on campus. And so I didn't want them to miss out on the interactions, not only with myself, but with their peers. So that was really the incentive.
And Lili, for you, what were the preparations like in organizing yourself for this new experience?
Yeah, so I was super fortunate. I applied to work with the Teaching and Learning Commons, and so I worked with Beth Simon, and I worked with Karen Nice-Winder, and we met all summer, maybe once a week, and it was really helpful for them to kind of put the organization of the class into context. I was trying to get it to be more of an online course, except for the laboratory component. So I not only wanted the lab experience to be fruitful, because we're still face-to-face, but I also wanted the rest of the course to not be me just lecturing at them through PowerPoint Zooms, especially spending the whole summer being on Zooms all summer. So, and seeing my kids get very tired about doing that. So I worked with them, we worked on developing learning objectives, not just for the overall course, but weekly learning objectives, and everything I designed for the course was based on the weekly goals and outcomes. And I got into the studio U at the university and recorded videos and developed pretty much all new assignments and curriculum for this class.
And Gabrielle, what about for you? What were the preparations like? How are they different from normal teaching preparations?
Actually, I would say they were not that different, and the podcast team was phenomenal. I basically chose to podcast my class, which means, and as I said, I'm very bored-intensive, where, you know, everything is done many times haphazardly or quickly on the board, because, you know, I just give another example and another example. And therefore, I worked with the podcast team, they were phenomenal, and we went into the rooms, the cameras were tracking well, the video and the sound was excellent, you know, my lecture notes are on the web, and within just a couple of meetings, everything was set, and we were rolling. And I must say, you know, very little thing have changed in my class, except that, you know, I have maybe a third attendance and two-thirds are remote, but within a few hours of the lecture, the lecture is on the web, and they are seeing it, and they send emails to the TAs or to me, asking questions, and if there is any issue, let's say the camera is out of focus, we send it to podcast.csc.edu, they immediately fix it, and within, you know, 24 hours, it's fixed by the next lecture, and now we are rolling. So I would say, you know, fortunately, very little has changed in my life. It was a very nice transition, very easy transition.
And how far in advance of the quarter, Gabrielle, did you really start focusing on that? Those preparations?
I, I mean, honestly, one week. Just a week before the quarter, I emailed the podcast team, we met, we saw the rooms, we did everything, and that's it, it was done, like one week before the quarter, that's it.
Wow, that's great. I mean, for a class you taught before, that can work that way. And Lili, what about in your case? I mean, how did you adjust your normal teaching preparations? I mean, I guess you've kind of addressed this to some extent, but do you have anything further to add in that?
Yeah, I guess it's related to the in-person labs. Initially, I made the class required that everyone be in person and just basically indicated that they could take the class next year if it did not work for them. And then, in working with Beth and Karen, we kind of recognized that there might be issues related to that, so we opened up the concurrent remote sections, but I sent an email to the students a few weeks before the quarter and said, "I really hope that they would consider being in person because of the cohort-building nature of this class." And out of my 140 students, 120 are in person and 20 are on the remote Zooms for the lab. And I think the biggest thing is that labs are not exactly the way they would be. We have a lot of precautions we have to take for safety and all sorts of things, and so the students are not really actually operating the equipment, but we had to redesign the lab so that students who were remote could participate, so it's really household items. When they're loading a cardboard structure that they build, they're using coins, so we can give them the weights of the coins, and they don't have to measure it, they're going to use hair dryers to blow things. And so it was really just being creative with the types of materials that we could get to them, and we also sent them a kit for one of the projects as well, so.
So, Lili, if you could walk us through the first day. So what was it like to walk back on the campus into the classroom in this period?
Yeah, so it was a little bit different. It's pretty quiet on campus. I used to remember, you know, I'd be glad that summer would come around and we'd get a little break, but then when fall came and all the students were back, and there was this enthusiasm and excitement, it was always nice. So it felt very quiet, and also, we had to go through some precautions about how to actually get them to enter the lab safely and exit the lab safely. So there were a lot of logistics, but once the students were in the class, it was, it felt right, except for the masks and everything, you know. It felt like you could see that they were super excited to be there and really happy to have the interaction with their, you know, their peers and the other students. And so I think even since then, people have made huge efforts to be here in person, which has been great.
And Gabrielle, how did you find the students reacted to being in the classroom again?
Very much like Lili. I mean, the campus is quiet, but there is some activity. You enter into the class, the students, you know, come in, and they sit in their assigned places, the class is clean, they are very happy to be there, they actually came personally and told me, "Thank you for giving this class," because I came to campus and I'm sick of staying in my dorm room, I'm quoting here, and both of them, in both classes, I teach two classes, one at 11:00 and one at 3:30, both of them came and said that, and the students are very polite, they are following the rules, we follow the rules, the rooms are super clean, everybody has his own microphone, I mean, podcast is working perfectly, you press a button, everything is done. I mean, you know, really, they are very happy, and now I get emails from the students who are seeing the podcast, students from Los Angeles and Irvine and Carlsbad saying, "Oh, we like it so much, we're going to drive, we are not staying on campus this fall, but we are driving Tuesday and Thursday in order to see you in person, and then we drive back home." And I say, "Welcome, welcome, the class is open, just come on in," and that's it. I mean, great feedback from the students. The students, in my opinion, my feedback is, the students really want to be in class. They really want.
I appreciate that, and if they want to drive to campus, I guess parking's not too difficult to find right now either, right?
Yes.
So what, you know, have, I mean, what are the challenges? What are the surprises about teaching in person that you've encountered this quarter? Lili?
Well, so I guess it's really just about the protocols we have to put in place for safety. So, you know, we are a lab, and we have desks for everyone six feet apart, and we have our masks on, and the students have been really good about that, following the rules. But I've also taken another step. You know, they do their health screening, and they also have, we have access to the information whether they're being compliant with the COVID tests every two weeks. And so it's actually been good because it's a learning experience for them. I've had to turn away a couple of students who were not compliant. I just asked, you know, you know, you need to, or reminded them that they need to get their tests done, and they were fine, because I just said, "Hey, if you can go find a place and join the Zoom, you can participate, you know, remotely." So they just went and found somewhere, some of them went back to their dorm rooms, and they were able to join and through breakout rooms, work with their partners who were in the lab, and so it worked really well. I mean, the challenges have been a little bit just about, you know, the changes in the way we run the labs and the health issues and stuff, but overall, it's been exciting.
And how about you, Gabrielle? Any specific challenges and surprises that you faced this quarter?
Well, I don't have a lab, so it is not as challenging as Lili or some colleagues who have labs at the freshman and sophomore level, definitely. And so it's mostly projects, and, you know, they can do projects by Zoom and together and things like this. But, you know, my challenge is, you know, my surprise is that everything was super clean. I mean, I say, I came back home the first time, and I told my wife, "This is cleaner than Trader Joe." I mean, you know, I feel more safe in the classroom than when you send me to buy milk at Trader Joe, basically. I mean, the students are very polite, I'm very happy, you know, very interested to be in class. No, podcast people is very, I would say, you know, they are very responsive immediately, I mean, you know, within 24 hours, they are responsive. Now, I basically say, for me, it has been a very nice experience, and for the students, been a nice experience, and we're moving along. We don't have the challenges of the labs and of desks and this, the classrooms are large, they are sitting comfortably, and...
Oh, I think Gabrielle, it looks like Gabrielle froze up. So, Lili, I wanted to ask, I mean, if you had any interactions with, you know...
About this, sir, and...
You were breaking up a little bit, Gabrielle, but we appreciate that. And, Lili, I wanted to ask, I mean, we, you know, we're testing students and faculty voluntarily on campus, and, you know, there's a contact tracing mechanism. Have you had any interactions with that process, and has that gone well?
Yeah, thanks for asking. Actually, the first week, we sort of got word that there was an exposure in one of my labs, and it was sort of a roundabout way where we got this information, and I think we did not have a lot of information on the protocols and how to handle it, so we didn't really react properly, I would say. For some reason, our department was notified, and then I was notified, and then our Student Affairs sent out a blast email to the students there, and it turns out that technically, ours was not considered an official exposure with the contact tracers, because every student was following the right protocols. We all had our masks, we never took them off, we were six feet apart, and everything was clean. So it was sort of a break in sort of the communications, and so I spoke with everybody, and even my department, we just didn't really know what was the right way to handle this. So it was, I think through my experience, the campus overall kind of learned that we needed a little bit more information, and even, you know, today I found out that the, when the little return to learn or the check mark, and then whether they're compliant and stuff, you know, my students were freaking out because it was showing that they were red, but they got a test three days ago, so there was an issue there. So there's all these little things, just in terms of the communication and getting the word out and the policies we put in place, but I think the campus is reacting very fast, and the students are actually willing to follow the rules. It's just, they just need more sort of education of how to go about doing that, so.
More guidance, more communication. So what advice would the two of you give to faculty who are considering teaching winter quarter? Any final pieces of advice? Gabrielle?
I mean, I would say, come and teach. The students will love you for it, and it is safe, and the campus is doing a phenomenal job, you know, on safety and on notification and on testing and so on. And I personally, who is greater than, over 50 years old, feel very safe here, much safer than any other place that I visit in San Diego. And at the end, I would say, our mission is to teach students, and the students really want this. I mean, the feedback I get, like Lili, is that they are very happy. When was the last time you saw students smiling in class, happy to come to class? It is nice to see, basically. So I am coming to teach, and I will continue teaching, and I feel very safe, and I think we are doing a great job. I think other universities are doing a great job. I think the statistics are with us. When we look at what's happening in Michigan and other places, they are Notre Dame and other places, they are having full, open campuses, and things are looking very good. I think everybody is taking it seriously, and we should, in my opinion, come and teach, and I will be doing it that way.
Thank you, Gabrielle. Lili, any comments about advice for the other faculty considering teaching winter quarter?
Yeah, I mean, I would agree with Gabrielle. I think that the students are really excited to be back, and if you're, I mean, if you're even a little bit passionate about teaching like I am, I mean, it's really fun to be in front of the students, and it makes the actual teaching experience more rewarding. I do think that if you're doing a lab class, it takes a little coordination. I'd be happy to talk to anyone who wants some advice. I do suggest, if you have time, to go talk to the Teaching and Learning Commons, although they may be inundated, they have been since spring, but they have a lot of great feedback. You don't have to completely flip your class like I did this summer, but there are a lot of smaller things you could do that would just make the engagement with the students a lot more rewarding, even in person, so you could have engaging lectures in person and do some things behind the scenes. So I would encourage that.
Well, thank you, and thank you so much, Professor Rabies and Professor Vandennanda, for sharing these stories and the lessons you've learned. I'm going to ask you to stay on the screen in case any faculty may have follow-up questions for you in the Q and A, but now I'd also like to invite our other panelists back to the screen so we can begin the Q and A session of this town hall. Okay, so I'd first like to introduce Dr. Allison Satterland. She's our Vice Chancellor for Student Affairs, and she's serving as Chair of the COVID Monitoring Team. Vice Chancellor Satterland is going to discuss how the university is monitoring for outbreaks.
Thanks, Bob. Good evening, everybody. It's really a pleasure to get to be here with you. So the campus created a campus intervention framework. Thanks very much to EVC Simmons and CFO Lue, and the specific structure and processes to actively oversee and evaluate the trends, behaviors, the facility usage data, and formulate on a daily basis, usually in the evening, any necessary recommendations or modifications that might be needed in campus activities, and to forward those recommendations to the EVC and Chancellor. And as necessary, our emergency planning group or Emergency Operation Committee, depending on the specific COVID events that might be impacting the campus community. And it's really my pleasure to chair the COVID Monitoring Team, and more specifically, we look each evening at the data around the health of our population in the county, in the country, on our campus, our on- and off-campus students, our employee health, our student conduct behavior, compliance behavior, again, the usage of our campus facilities within a community context. And our responsibility each evening is to identify any concerning trends that might warrant campus action, other than the intervention that has already taken place throughout the day and evening to secure the health of individuals or small positive clusters, and often to make recommendations as well, based on communication needs that we might see, technical needs that we might see, or issues that might need to continue to be resolved on the back end. And then we report those to the COVID Response Team chaired by EVC Simmons, and they come together on an emergency basis as needed and assess the significance and the context around those trends that we might be seeing, and then bring recommendations to the Cabinet, EOC, or EPG, our executive policy group, as appropriate. And I have the pleasure of serving on the COVID Monitoring Team with Dr. Natasha Martin, who's our modeling expert, quite exceptional. I hope you'll take a look at the dashboard that she has launched and been doing quite a bit of leadership around. Dr. Chip Schooli, our ID specialist, the wonderful Bob Newhard, our Director of OSI, our Dean of Public Health, Dr. Cheryl Anderson, who also has the... Our Dean of Public Health, Dr. Cheryl Anderson, who also has the critical task of serving as our liaison to the County of Public Health and our vibrant interim Executive Director of Student Health and Wellbeing, Dr. Angela Socia. And our job is we meet usually every evening from five to sixes. And we meet seven days a week because we know that the health of our community requires our constant diligence. So we have, over our last several weeks together, spent some time working to enhance the dashboard. Our students alerted us to a poor quality mask that had been circulated through the summer prior to some additional science and higher quality mask protocols had been finalized through procurement. We were able to get those out of the hands of our students and replace them with a high quality mask. We've also had the opportunity to make some recommendations around our wastewater testing and moving that from a few times a week to every day. And using the data again that we're seeing around our student behavior to celebrate our students for their outstanding contributions to the health of our community and to also reinforce on a consultation basis as needed, the faculty needs as they're also engaging with students on an in-person basis. So Bob, that's a comprehensive overview of what we've been doing. And I, again, I appreciate the opportunity to share the team's work.
Thank you, Vice Chancellor Satterland. Yes, it's a very active program of monitoring. And now I'd like to introduce Dr. Cheryl Anderson, and we've just heard her referred to. She's the Dean of the School of Public Health here. And Dr. Anderson, we just heard from Professor Vandainda that she had a student test positive. So this next question you could address is, when students test positive for COVID, what is the protocol?
Yeah, thank you, Bob. I just want to say I really enjoyed listening to Dr. Rebels and Dr. Vandainda about their teaching experiences. And I want to say thank you for all that you do to support the students at UC San Diego. With regards to what happens when there's a positive test result, well, first let me say that before I go into the details of what happens, I'll tell you why it happens. When there is a positive test result, which is usually detected early because of the surveillance system that we have on our campus, our goal is to try and interrupt the transmission of SARS-CoV-2. And often, we're trying to interrupt inadvertent transmission of SARS-CoV-2 for individuals who may have been in contact with the person who has a positive test result and not even yet know whether or not they too may have the infection. So with that goal in mind, within 24 hours of a person receiving a test result, they usually get a call from our public health team, and this is a wonderful team of faculty. We have employees from the general community who work with us to do this work around contact tracing. And this faculty are in our new Herbert Wartham School of Public Health. They reach out and they get some information. We do an interview from the person with the positive result. Try to understand who they are, their demographics, their health situation, whether or not they're at high risk for becoming very sick from the infection. We get a sense of what, where they usually do their activities, where do they live, where do they learn, where are they working, where they have their recreational activities. And then we communicate with them the importance of self-isolation. We understand what barriers they may be experiencing to self-isolation and try to clear those barriers out and really think about what kinds of services they might need during the time that they're isolated. A notice from the Health Department is sent to those individuals because they may need it for work purposes, et cetera. And then there's a follow-up that happens for 14 days until we anticipate that they would no longer be likely to transmit the virus. In addition to following up with the person with the test result, we elicit the names of the contacts, the close contacts of that individual. Close contacts are defined as being within six feet of a person with a positive test result for more than 15 minutes. And so as Dr. Vandainda mentioned, in the scenario that, that we that she described, individuals did not meet that definition and thus didn't get further follow-up from the team. If that definition is met, those individuals, within 48 hours of us knowing about the positive test result, also have an interview. And in that interview, we do some very similar things to what I just described for the person with the positive result. We understand their demographics, their health status. We talk with them about not only whether they're likely to experience serious symptoms, but whether or not they are likely to also be at high risk for transmitting SARS-CoV-2 should they develop it. We talk to them about testing, the need to monitor their symptoms and to get a test if symptoms do develop. We also try to understand their typical activities and give quarantine instructions. Along with the quarantine instructions is a discussion around what barriers there may be to quarantining. And we follow up with them also over a 14-day period. These individuals, like the person that received the positive result, also get a notice from the San Diego Health Department to facilitate anything that they may need to interrupt during the time of quarantine. So I want to just say thank you so much to our, our public health team who have been doing a really great job since we launched the Return to Learn Pilot to manage through contact tracing for our campus.
Thank you, Dr. Anderson. I wish we could extend that program to the entire United States of America, but that's a work in progress. So I'd like to move on now. We heard about some aspects of the available facilities on campus from our faculty earlier, but to expand on this now, I'd like to introduce Stephen Jackson to address our next question. He serves as our Associate Vice Chancellor for Resource Management and Planning. And the question is, what is the cleaning protocol for classrooms, labs and other facilities?
Thank you, Dr. Connetti, and I appreciate the opportunity to participate in this faculty town hall. And all the information I will be providing is also available on the FM website. So I really invite everyone to visit the site to learn more. Please note that in providing our COVID cleaning, FM is following established COVID disinfection protocols as developed and updated by our EHNS team and based on the recommendations and guidance from the CDC, California Department of Public Health and the County of San Diego Department of Public Health. Since the pandemic started, FM has purchased 80 hydrostatic disinfectant sprayers. And based on recent approvals, we're in the process of hiring and standing up a dedicated sanitation cleaning team. So in addition to providing our normal cleaning schedule of custodial services, FM is also disinfecting all of the campus high-traffic areas and all the restrooms on a daily and often multiple frequency basis based on the traffic and including all of our classrooms on a twice-daily schedule, which will include the outdoor classroom spaces once those are completed. Also, as far as the classrooms, all the classrooms have multiple sanitation wipe dispensers for those students to take and wipe down and disinfect their desk and seating areas at the beginning of each class. And all of the classroom buildings, similar to all of the campus core buildings, have installed sanitation stations at all of the main entrances. And FM will continue to monitor the restroom soap supplies to ensure that all individuals can continue to wash their hands frequently per the CDC recommendation. And as Dr. Anderson mentioned, should a student or faculty member test positive and it is determined that a classroom needs to be decontaminated, FM will be notified and their in-house COVID cleaning team will be dispatched. These teams are equipped with the full personal protective equipment, those hydrostatic sprayers that I mentioned, and they are able to respond within hours to provide a full COVID disinfection and decontamination cleaning of a classroom space, which typically takes around two to three hours of time. And just as a metric, since the beginning of the pandemic, FM has performed 46 of these COVID decontamination cleanings, all successfully with no issues to the FM staff. Hope that answers the question. And again, I appreciate the opportunity and welcome everyone to visit the FM website for more information. Thank you, Dr. Connetti.
All right. Thank you, Steve. So the next set of questions is for Associate Vice Chancellor Carlos Genton. He was also Chair of the Educational Continuity Task Force. And he, I think, will be joined by Karen Nieswender, the Senior Instructional Designer for the Digital Learning Hub, although we may be having some technical difficulties. But the question to you, Carlos, is what is the plan for winter quarter instruction? And what are we doing to support faculty teaching in person or in hybrid modalities for the winter quarter?
Thank you, Bob. So as far as we are planning, winter quarter will look very similar to full quarter in terms of the constraints. So no more than 50 students in the classroom, the same physical distancing guidelines, masking requirements, testing requirements, et cetera. We do keep learning more and more every day. And so those protocols do evolve. And depending on how the pandemic evolves in San Diego County and then in the rest of the country, we may have to make adjustments. The, what we will have, starting in two weeks, is the opportunity to teach outdoors. And so we have a fantastic crew here on campus who's been working with working together to put together these outdoor teaching tents. These are a couple of shots from Revel. And these are enormous structures. If you have a chance to go on campus and check them out, it's really impressive. They're about the size of two basketball courts put together. And they very safely accommodate 50 students each. And they will be fully AV-equipped, Wi-Fi, Zoom-capable, podcast-capable, projection screens, everything. This will give us some additional capabilities and some additional capacity that we haven't had today and it might accommodate teaching in different modalities or solving different kinds of teaching challenges that we have now because of the space constraints. So one of the big challenges that we've been dealing with is the lack of lab space. Now, this is obviously not going to be an option for a wet lab type of situation, but if you're doing a dry lab or you're doing performance-based courses, this might be a safer option for you. Can we flip through some of these slides to just showcase? This is a couple of shots from Warren. That's the second side where we have the tents next. And these are just some of the pictures from inside the classroom so that you can see what that looks like if you haven't been inside one of them. So everything is clearly marked. Everything is nicely cleaned, as we've heard. And then the final screenshot here. And the final thing that I'll bring up in terms of supporting both in-person and remote instruction, we have had the option for faculty to reserve remote teaching rooms. These are specially designed small classrooms for you to lecture from. You won't have any students in the classroom, but if you have challenges teaching from home because of bandwidth constraints or because of lack of privacy or the right facilities, those can be booked through your department chair or the new department scheduler. And we are happy to accommodate you that way. And then I'll turn over to my colleague to talk a little bit about accommodating synchronous and asynchronous at the same time.
Hey, Carlos, I wanted to ask one question from the Q and A, a live question.
Oh, right.
And that is, how would the different kinds of weather that we experience in winter affect the outdoor classroom setups, if at all?
So these tents that we're designing, you know, they're going to be a little bit of an experiment. We've never taught outdoors before. Luckily, we're blessed with fairly stable and mild weather. Now, the tents are kind of supersized. The students will be nowhere near an edge. And so mild rain will be fine. All the tents are actually lifted off the ground. There's a, there's a fake floor. And our colleagues here and campus have done an outstanding job to improve drainage and make sure that we won't, we won't be teaching in a puddle. Now, if the rain comes horizontal, we have the option of bringing down some nets or deploying other countermeasures to kind of break that. And the same thing for buffering a little bit of the wind. The tents actually do have foldable walls that we can bring down. We're hoping we won't have to get there because that kind of defeats a little bit of the airflow that we're trying to achieve. So we're going to try them this, this fall and learn. And over the winter, we will continue to make adjustments and we're confident we'll be able to make it work.
All right. Thank you, Carlos. Now, I was wondering, is Karen, are you available on the phone or? No, I think, yeah, I think we lost Karen. So I think in that case, we'll just move on to Q and A.
I'm actually here, sorry.
Okay, great.
Sorry about that. Perfect. Thank you. So thank you for the opportunity to share a little bit of information. When you think about teaching in the remote environment, in other words, not in the physical spaces, but in the actual virtual spaces, and you're planning out your course, you're actually going to have two different types of activities to incorporate. And you've heard these terms a million times already, but one of the, one of the modes is asynchronous. And I think of this as teaching in the same virtual space as the students, but at a different time. And this is really going to look different for each of the courses that you're teaching. It's really an opportunity for the students to dive into some material kind of on their own time and do something with the material. So one example of a type of instruction that you can do in a remote environment is you prepare some videos beforehand and have the students watch those videos and then answer some questions. A prime example of this is actually Lili Vandainda's course. She recorded a number of videos beforehand, before the term started, and the students watched those videos before they come to the lab so they have some background information. In addition to the asynchronous modality, we also have the synchronous modality. And that is really teaching in the same virtual space with the students at the same time. So you can imagine there are some affordances that you have here. So for example, you might work with an expert that is maybe on the other side of the country or even the other side of the globe. This is a great opportunity because many of them are in their home office working. So now is a great time to ask them to come in as guest speakers in your course. Or you could provide a demonstration of maybe a software or a website that you frequently use in your discipline. And kind of talk through the students, with the students, what you're doing as you're using these tools. At UCSC, because we're in this kind of weird upside-down COVID world, everything that we do in asynchronous format should also be made available in an asynchronous format. And the main reason for that is it helps to accommodate students who, for some reason, are not able to join you at that same time. So maybe they have some environmental conditions or random hypothetical, maybe they have some technical issues. It could also be that they've gotten sick. So the trick with this is to not necessarily recreate a separate session, but to take what you're doing in your synchronous session and just repackage it for a virtual environment. So for example, that sample activity where you work the students through a piece of software or a website that you frequently use, you could have the students watch that video and work along with you and then submit the end product of that session. So in other words, they're going to have kind of an equivalent learning experience, but it's just going to be done on their own time. And it takes advantage of all the preparation that you've done for the synchronous session. The last thing that I will add here is that the most effective remote courses really have a combination of asynchronous and synchronous because it really is the best of both worlds. It lets the students access the material, engage with you, engage with the other students and really dig deep into some of the content. So thank you very much. And again, I apologize for the technical difficulty.
Thank you, Karen. While I have you on the line, how do you best ensure that remote participants feel fully included during an in-person class? Do you have any best practices that you can share in this regard?
Absolutely. And first of all, I love this question because it really demonstrates that instructors are thinking about the student's experience. So the first thing that I'll say is, don't try to do this alone. Include an instructional assistant or a teaching assistant, or if you don't have one of those, ask for an in-class student volunteer. And have somebody monitoring that Zoom session and maybe translating feedback and questions from the students that are remote into the actual physical classroom. You can also consider doing things like positioning a camera so that the students in Zoom can see both the student and the instructor in the classroom. And occasionally projecting from that front computer, the gallery view of the students in the Zoom session. And that really just kind of reminds students in both areas that there are additional learners that are either in-person or remote and it really incorporates them. The other thing, the final thing that I will add is find some tools like some is find some tools like something like Kahoot, which is a gamified question-and-answer tool that you, as an instructor, can pose a question and students in both the remote and the face-to-face environment can submit answers. You can see the data from their answers in real time. You can respond to them and incorporate feedback both for the in-person and the remote students. So if you, if you'd like to talk about other strategies, please do feel free to reach out to the Teaching and Learning Commons. We're happy to help you kind of figure out how to navigate this, this world of, of hybrid instruction.
All right. Thank you, Karen. The next question is for ABC Jensen. What is the student buy-in towards in-person classes? Is there a sense that they would be receptive to more opportunities?
Absolutely. That is the, the, the feel that we're getting. There's, there's a, a large number of our students who are displaced and, and who cannot join us. But we do have at least half of our students who are looking for or would be open to considering an in-person experience. The 6,000 students that we have living on campus, most of them are taking in-person classes, but most of them are only taking one in-person class because of the lack of availability of options. So absolutely.
Thank you, Carlos. The next question is for Vice Chancellor Satterland and Dr. Natasha Martin from the COVID Management Team. And that is that university outbreaks are off-campus frequently. Will we know if that happens here?
Thanks, Bob. I'll start with the answer. So a really important part of our Return to Learn program is that asymptomatic testing is available at no cost for all students, whether they're residing on campus or off-campus. So testing is mandatory every two weeks for students who are residing on campus or coming on to campus. And but it's also highly recommended every two weeks for students who are residing off-campus who are not coming onto campus. And, and this is really important so that we can monitor viral activity off-campus, as you mentioned. Since the start of instructional term, October 1st, we have done over 13,500 tests among students. And more than 5,500 of those tests have been performed on off-campus students. And that off-campus testing has detected 18 infections among off-campus students, indicating that we're able to kind of detect infections in this off-campus group with our testing programs. As you've already heard today, once infections are detected, these students are contacted by student health and contact tracing is performed through our public health team as described by Dean Anderson. And so we have a really robust program in place to address these off-campus infections. These and other data are monitored daily as part of our COVID monitoring team meeting, which you've heard Vice Chancellor Satterland describe. And you can also see the testing and case breakdowns among on- and off-campus students if you visit our public daily UC San Diego COVID dashboard. We just updated that yesterday, so if you haven't seen the update, I encourage you to go back and view it. And again, it, it is a daily dashboard updating with our, our daily testing data, and it now provides that breakdown of on- and off-campus activity.
Thank you. Vice Chancellor Satterland?
Bob, there's nothing that I could add that would make that answer better. Thank you, Dr. Martin.
Thank you. The next question is back to ABC Jensen. Can I ask my students to provide proof that they have done their symptom screening and are compliant with test requirements?
So I think we've heard an example here from Dr. Vandennanda that she does, and you absolutely can. Any university official, which includes faculty and TAs, can ask students to show their, their testing status. The only thing that is important, if, if that's what you choose to do, is to make sure that you understand what the app is actually showing you and that you don't engage in profiling or, or those kinds of activities. So we're rather checking everybody or we're not checking. If you choose not to do this, understand that, that the Student Care Team, Student Affairs is working behind the scenes to ensure that we have high degrees of compliance. And if students are out of compliance, they will be hounded and, and worked with to, to make sure that they, they get back into compliance.
Supported, supported, Dr. Jensen.
Thank you. Thank you for that clarification as well. So the next question is for Executive Vice Chancellor Simmons, and it's a question that she has answered before, but it bears addressing again, just to be perfectly clear. And that is, will it be mandatory for instructors to return to the classroom this winter quarter? Or will it be up to the instructor to decide if the course will be delivered remotely or in-person?
It will be up to the instructor or teaching assistant to personally decide whether to return to teaching in-person or whether to teach hybrid or whether to teach remotely. Just as it was in fall, it will be the same in winter, up to the instructor or TA.
Thank you, EBC Simmons. And the next question is also for you. And, you know, we, we're talking today about in-person instruction. Well, an important part of the university experience is bring, is recruiting the next generation, the next classes of students. So when might campus tours resume? And when they do, what sort of measures will be taken? Will the groups be smaller?
That's a great question. At the moment, we are not doing campus tours because they would not be consistent with the county's public health guidelines. And so we don't know when we'll be able to resume in-person tours because that will depend on the guidance that we're getting from the county. One would certainly imagine that when tours are eventually resumed, they would probably be smaller. But what I can tell you is that just today I got a preview of the digital viewbooks, the digital tours, the digital brochures, the materials that are being sent to student applicants and being taken to virtual college fairs by our recruitment staff from enrollment management. And they're really pretty spectacular. So even though it's nicer to be here and experience it in person, we are really doing our best to give the applicants the sense of what campus would feel like.
All right. Thank you. Back, back to ABC Jensen. So an aspect of hybrid instruction is if you're teaching a large class virtually, will the instructors still be able to have office hours in-person or, and study sections in-person?
With appropriate safeguards, yes. So we, there's a couple of limitations. We, we still need to abide by occupancy limits. And we also need to comply with county orders when it comes to gatherings. And so anything that we do as a class activity really needs to be scheduled and it needs to be in an appropriate space and with appropriate safeguards. But that said, and especially with, with the outdoor spaces coming online, there's nothing saying that we couldn't do office hours in, in a set time, in a set place for students to drop in. The important thing here in a hybrid class would be to make sure that we also then have virtual office hours or that remote students can join in if they can't come to campus to, to participate.
Thank you, ABC Jensen. So time is, uh, time is getting short, and so I think we only have time for for one, one or two more questions. And one of them is for the EBC, and that regards changing conditions. So what are the triggers that would prompt a reduction or elimination of in-person instruction and, and the on-campus presence here at UC San Diego?
So you, earlier in this webinar, you heard Vice Chancellor Satterland describe the way that we are every single day monitoring a wide range of data on health, individual health, population health, health in the county, behavior of individuals who are living and working here on campus, feedback from those who are living and working on campus. And daily, based on trends in all of that data, we are adjusting the way that the campus operates. And that can include new ways of messaging to students perhaps, new cleaning methods, as we actually heard from ABC Jackson. And there are many, many small targeted adjustments that we can make every day to improve how the campus is functioning and to make sure we stay on track to be as healthy and safe as possible here on campus. Thus far, as you've heard, our positivity rates are extremely low, and we haven't seen any evidence of transmission in teaching or research spaces. And our peer campuses in the Association of American Universities likewise are not seeing transmission in teaching spaces. So with all of that background, the significant reduction or elimination of in-person instruction or on-campus presence, that, for that to happen, there would have to be a really severe shift away from what we are now seeing. If there were a clear public health set of concerns arising from that data that we're monitoring every day, that's what would lead us to take such a step. We are doing our best to really stay on top of it day by day so big things don't sneak up on us. So that's how we're thinking about it.
Well, thank you, EBC Simmons. Well, I am afraid that that is all the time that we have for today. I would like to thank everybody who joined us for their questions that they have given to us, and we will be attempting to answer everyone's questions and posting the responses on the Return to Learn website, as I mentioned before. And I'd like to also thank the presenters and the guests again for sharing their time and information with us today and all of you, the UC San Diego faculty for attending and bring, helping us work to come together as a community of Tritons as we get through this extraordinary period of history. I also like to encourage you to complete the post-event survey because we want to learn how to communicate better. And, and that will be sent out shortly. But at this point, this concludes this Return to Learn Faculty Town Hall. Please come back and join us in November for another special, special session on remote teaching and teaching options.